Good evening, I'd like to call the regular Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on August the fourth, two thousand and fourteen at seven P M. Like to welcome everyone here, appreciate you coming, especially our media. And at this time, I'll ask Commissioner McIntyre for invocation.
Thank you Commissioner Chairman Dennis. A few months ago, I received an email and it was a prayer by Billy Graham. And it certainly speaks to what's going on in our world today. And if you would indulge me, I'd like to read that as my prayer tonight, so please bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to ask your forgiveness and to seek your direction and guidance. We know your words say, woe to those who call evil good, but is exactly what we have done. We have lost our spiritual equilibrium and reversed our values. We have exploited the poor and called it the lottery. We have rewarded laziness and called it welfare. We have killed our unborn and called it choice. We have shot abortionists and called it justifiable. We have neglected to discipline our children and called it building self-esteem. We have abused power and called it politics. We have coveted our neighbors' possessions and called it ambition. We have polluted the air with profanity and pornography and called it freedom of expression. We have ridiculed the time-honored values of our forefathers and called it enlightenment. Search us all, God, and know our hearts today. Cleanse us from sin and set us free in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you. Stand with me and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner McIntyre. At this time, I'll ask for approval or adjustments to the agenda. If there's not any, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. First item is the Tax Collector's Annual Settlement for two thousand and thirteen fourteen. Clinton, you're up.
Good evening gentlemen, glad to see each and every one of you here this evening. I am here to give the Tax Collector's Annual Settlement for fiscal year thirteen fourteen. Pursuant to General Statute one oh five three seventy-three, the tax collector must present an annual settlement report to the governing board. The attached financial reports provide an overview of the collection activity for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen fourteen. The real and personal property collection rate excluding motor vehicles was ninety-five point nine nine percent. The collection rate for registered motor vehicles was ninety-one point one eight percent, yielding an overall collection rate of ninety-five point seven one percent. The overall collection rate represents an increase in the overall rate from the prior fiscal year two thousand and twelve thirteen, which had an overall rate of ninety-five point one four. Statutory remedies of garnishment, attachment, debt set-off, S G, and pre-foreclosure have been utilized to the extent possible for the collection of avalorum taxes. As part of the settlement, the governing board also charges the tax collector with collecting taxes for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year two thousand and fourteen fifteen. This charge gives the tax collector authority to use enforced collection measures and it gives notice that the tax lien is first in priority. You have six attachments that should be in your handouts for tonight. The first one I'd like to go over is the analysis of the countywide levy report. At the bottom, it has the collection percentages for each type of avalorum tax. The first column is the total levy. The second column is excluding registered motor vehicles. And then the third column is registered motor vehicles. Now, the one thing I want to point out about that last column is, as noted at the bottom, those registered motor vehicles only account for what was collected in our OneTax software for the six months before N C V T S took over in collection rate. So that ninety-one point eight, ninety-one point one eight percent is greater than last year. We typically hover around eighty-six, eighty-seven percent for motor vehicles. So not only is N C V T S collection rate higher, but it also had an impact on the current year's taxes because it was forcing individuals to pay their vehicle tax before they could get their tag in print. So that, that, that rate really went up and that's what helped the overall rate go up. The next is the Annual Audit Report and that just is the total levy and it shows the ninety-five point seven one percent collection rate that we achieved. The third handout is the Delinquent Collections Report. It shows not only we trying to collect the current year taxes, but we're also trying to collect the taxes that go back ten years that are still owed to Stanley County. We collected one million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cent in the past ten-year taxes that were delinquent and due, which is more than I think was budgeted, Andy. So I was very pleased with that number. Two thousand and three, four year will be purged. Matter of fact, it already has been purged. Ten-year statute limitations, we cannot enforce collect after anything that's more than ten years old per statute. We still have the files, we keep the files. If somebody comes in and is willing to pay an O three bill, we're definitely going to take the money, but we can't enforce collect on, on that. So that's why we purge it from the system. The law, next item is the Settlement Information for Uncollected Taxes. Basically, it's three reports that we run that just make sure everything balances. And you can see that the total uncollected was one million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four oh nine oh three. That number does not include late listing penalties and things of that, that's just a principal amount. But that number is lower than previous years simply because we only have half of a year of motor vehicles involved in that and it's not the full year. The next is the affidavit saying I've done everything I can to collect those taxes. And then lastly, is the order to collect the current year. So I respectfully request the board accept and approve the annual settlement report and charge the tax collector with collecting the two thousand and fourteen fifteen taxes.
Anyone have any questions, Clinton?
Just one question, curious. So the fact that the state is collecting those motor vehicle taxes now, so if we have a full year of that, it's probably a lot higher than ninety-one.
Yeah, Mr. McIntyre, the N C V T S program, finance sins, they're actually, they get all that. I'm not charged with collecting that. But they, the last report was ninety-nine point two seven percent that they're collecting. So hopefully next year with a full year on that system, the motor vehicle should be at ninety-nine percent or above. We do have a few stragglers that still come through. Right now, we're averaging about twenty-five a month bills that we bill the old way for motor vehicles. And that's just because there's a couple of kinks in the law that people are trying to, to work out and they fall into that system.
Sounds like good news.
Anyone else? What's the pleasure, the board?
Make a motion to accept and approve the annual settlement report. Can I do this all in one motion and to charge tax collector we collected in two thousand and fourteen fifteen taxes?
Motion, motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried, thank you Clinton.
Thank you gentlemen.
Next item on the agenda is presentation and approval of agreement with Segal Revenue and Expense Specialist Incorporated to perform sales tax audits. Toby Hinson, Finance Director, reporting.
Good evening. Before you this evening is the Letter of Agreement between the county and Segal Revenue and Expense Specialist to provide sales tax audits for the county. The one we recently, one we have been using for many years has recently notified us that they aren't doing these type of sales tax audits anymore. So I contacted Robert Segal with Segal Revenue and Expense Specialist and they are willing to start providing this for the county. And as you can see, they, there's different fee structures there. The more that they find to be re-appropriated to the county, the less percentage the fee will be. Now, if they find nothing to be re-appropriated to the county, we don't owe them anything. So it just depends on how much they, they do find for us. And the state has changed, I mean, the Department of Revenue has changed. They're actually providing their own audits for larger counties and, and cities. So therefore, the one we had previously lost a lot of their bigger customers because if the Department of Revenue is doing that audit for them, they don't have to get an outside firm to, to do that. So, so that's why the previous one is, is no longer doing this. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may, you may have.
Anyone have any questions, Toby?
Just one, are these rates comparable to what we've been paying? Or will they be, you think?
It's a little bit more if you go toward the bottom. I think before we paid maybe thirty percent of what they find. So it depends if they re-appropriate less than seventy-five thousand, we are paying probably more of a percentage than we used to. But according to what Mr. Segal said, they've even had to change their fee structure the way, from the way it was before because of what the Department of Revenue has, has done. But again, if they don't find anything, then we don't owe them anything.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure, the board?
I make a motion we approve the request.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a review and approval of the naming rights. R F P for the Aggreg Civic Center Livestock Arena, presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have before you this evening a R F P or a proposed R F P for the naming rights of the livestock arena. If you recall during one of your budget workshops, Candace approached us about the livestock arena and the progress that's been made and the fundraising efforts that are underway. Conceptual designs have been done, there's actually even been some rough civil work done on the project in terms of design. And so the board actually made a financial commitment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that time. But during those, that conversation or subsequent to that conversation, we talked about naming rights and the ability to maybe leverage some private sector money to help with the, to offset the costs of this. And the board at that time directed us to come back within thirty to sixty days with a request for proposal, R F P, for you all to consider. And so that's what you have before you this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Candace is also here in case any questions arise that I may not be able to answer that are more specific to the project than the committee to date. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. And there is a substitute for page two that you have on your desk. Just to clarify, one of the items in terms of the use of the facility and the fact there would be no rental fee for two times per year for those, whoever the one was the highest bidder. And so on, on the naming rights. So we wanted just to, it was just a clarification on that that came from one of the board members. Be happy to answer any other questions that the board may have.
Anyone have any questions, Randy?
Did I see in here and did I dream it that there will be some signage for whoever we choose on the marquee out front?
That's correct, we would. I think that's one of the more enticing pieces of it because of the traffic on twenty-four, twenty-seven is that we would allow for signage on the marquee. Now, all the signage would be responsibility of whoever the, the winning bidder is and that we decide to enter into a partnership with, but they would have the ability to put that sign up right there on the highway, on the existing sign or adjacent to it.
Any other questions?
No question, I just have a comment, I don't know who did this, whether Candace did it or Candace and Andy or whatever, but I thought it was very well done and I was glad to see that we got it back in our hands so quickly. I think it's very well done. I'll go ahead and move that we approve the R F P as presented and we move forward in the process.
Second.
Thank you Vice Chairman for that comment, I was fixing to make it too, so you beat me to it. Thank you very much, it was a good thing. Motion made by Vice Chairman Donovan for approval, seconded by Commissioner McIntyre. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we ought to give Candace an opportunity to advertise for the Aggreg Civic Day that's coming up this month. You got the podium if you want a minute to advertise that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I would like to invite all of you and the public to our Stanley County Aggreg Civic Day. It's a flagship event for the friends of the Aggreg Civic Center. It's going to be on Saturday, August sixteenth, nine A M. to three P M. It's an agricultural awareness event, but we've got lots of things for Stanley County citizens of all ages, from toddler on up to senior citizens. We've grown the event this year thanks to lots of our community sponsors. And for fear of leaving one out, I won't name them all, but our, our three largest sponsors this year are Uwari Bank Strategic Investment Advisors and Union Power. And just without the support of the sponsors, we wouldn't be able to make it happen. But the event's free, we've got livestock shows hosted by Cooperative Extension, we have a mule jump, dog demonstrations, heritage events, so it's going to be a really great day. We anticipate visitation for three thousand, upwards of four thousand, five thousand, we're hoping. So please come on out and join us.
Thank you Candace. Next item on our agenda is the two thousand and fourteen Single Family Rehab and Urgent Repair Grants Policy and Approval, presenter is Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The county recently received a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in grant funds for single-family rehab, a hundred thousand for the urgent repairs program from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. In your packet this evening, you have housing assistance policies and procurement and disbursement policies for both of these programs. There are some substitutes for those. There were, the ones that were put in your packet were, had some grammatical errors and stuff and they were from a different draft that got in there. And so I wanted to make sure you saw the most updated version, which is in your, you have as a replacement at your, the podium this evening. None of the changes that you'll see on those replacements are substantive, they're just simply some, some grammatical items and typos that were included in that, those, the draft that got in there mistakenly. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on these. And these, these are, policies are consistent with what you've approved in the past. The grant administrator just couldn't be here this evening to, to present those.
Anyone have any questions? What, what's the pleasure, the board?
Make a motion that we adopt the housing assistance policies and procurement and dispersion policies for both two thousand and fourteen Single Family Rehab and Urgent Repair Grants.
Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Next item is the Resolution of Support for the N C twenty-four, twenty-seven, seventy-three widening project. Andy, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you all are aware, during the two thousand and thirteen legislative session, the House adopted House Bill eight seventeen, which created the Strategic Transportation Investment Plan, S T I. And that's based on the Strategic Mobility Formula. That formula, and you saw some of this previously, isn't necessarily favorable, favorable to rural areas because it doesn't prioritize safety, it prioritizes congestion, which as a result, projects in your metro areas are getting higher points and are being rated higher. And you saw that on some charts that we had here a couple, a month or so ago with the, with the projects. Since that time, twenty-four, twenty-seven has received some additional points based on a mistake that was made by the division. We're still not sure where that, how that's going to shake out at the regional level or the statewide level, but that is encouraging. And I know that our representative, Justin Burr, went to work after one of our meetings and some, some, some emails or calls from different folks in the community and he's helped to make sure that that mistake got corrected. I'm still not sure where exactly that's going to shake out. And I think, so the board had asked for a resolution that we could send to the Board of Transportation and our delegation at a previous meeting, and so that's what we brought back before you. This, this, this not only addresses the twenty-four, twenty-seven, but it addresses the whole formula in the Strategic Transportation Plan because it's not just twenty-four, twenty-seven, that certainly is one of the more urgent ones because of the design work and the permitting and all the things that have been done and the connection to I seventy-three, I seventy-four and Bisco. But forty-nine and fifty-two are very critical projects for Stanley County as well and they're not receiving points because of the way that the new formula works and the, the less of a priority that safety has played. And so this, this resolution addresses that piece of it as well. So I have that before you, we did put a replacement one, we did catch a missed, a typo. It was supposed to be, we had, it's supposed to be moot, but it was pronounced or spelled mute. And so we just wanted to make sure we corrected that and put that before you. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Randy?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to thank, first of all, the county commissioners for their response to the R P O and their, the R P O's recognition of this. I met with Dana today, that is Dujinkie, and I thanked her for helping get that information to us in our R P O area. County commissioners have responded, others in the, in Stanley County have responded. And actually, in, in speaking with the mayor of Albemarle today, Ronnie Michael thanked him for his efforts also to use social media and things that they've done to make this go forward. I think this is a perfect example of advocacy and, and things that we need to be doing in order to have our message heard either regionally or across the state. Mayor Michael told me today that he had also had a chance to speak with the Secretary of D O T, T A D, and brought before him the fact, as we discussed last meeting, that there was only one project across the state that was in an R P O. And as, as our manager has indicated, this is not about a single project, this is about the process and how that process is negatively impacting counties like Stanley and how that needs to be changed in order for, for that improvement to be made. So I want to thank all, everyone for what they've done to kind of create the advocacy that has brought this to light and, and we moving forward. The, the points from region or Division Eight have been awarded, twenty-four, twenty-seven. It seemingly at the first did not get points, but now we've understand that, that similar to our situation, has gotten points especially because of the interconnectivity from Fayetteville into the Piedmont area. And so again, this, this fight is not over, excuse me, for this project, but it's, but we want to continue to do all we can to try to keep the twenty-four, twenty-seven project up there and hopefully it'll be funded. One of the things that Dana, as she had attended a statewide R P O meeting, indicated that one thing that might be in our favor is that the funding for projects also includes the idea of can they be done? And the fact of the matter that this twenty-four, twenty-seven project is so far along may in, in, in fact, put us in a better position. Example, if let's say four eighty-five got a point, got points and got a priority, but they had to go through a two-year environmental and a two-year design and a, you know, another process to get there, that would, that would push them out of the five-year window that this funding is actually designed to, to take care of. This project, twenty-four, twenty-seven is ready to go and should be, should be constructed, I think it's in two thousand and seventeen. So the fact that we're already ahead of the game, we've already put all our work in, R P Os put their work in, D O Ts put their work in, it may in fact be helpful and so cross our fingers and hope we can still get it done. But, but I want to again, just thank the commissioners for what they've done.
Thank you Vice Chairman. Also, Vice Chairman Donovan, you didn't mention that forty-nine is engineered all the way to the river. I got that done the first year I was on the board, trying to think of it. Once you get it engineered, it will be built sometime or another, so it's already engineered, so it's, it's ready to go too. Any other questions? What's the pleasure, the board?
I just like to comment, I speak for myself, to thank Representative Burr for the action he took in order to bring to light the situation to bring up that the points have been missed on that particular project. He certainly assisted a county quite well in that endeavor.
Any other comments? What's the pleasure, the board? Motion made by, I believe Vice Chairman McIntyre for approval, seconded by Commissioner Ashudo.
Vice Chairman Donovan?
Vice Chairman Donovan, I'll get that right in a minute. I'm looking at you and calling you the wrong thing, but that's all, just look over me. Josh and I are the seniors up here, so we, we're allowed to make mistakes. We, you and I are the same age now, you know.
We are right now.
Yeah, right now. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. Next item is the Consent Agenda and I'll entertain a motion that we accept the Consent Agenda as presented. Motion made by Commissioner McIntyre for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. All in favor, say aye. Motion carried. It's now time for public comment. Nobody signed up, but anybody want to get up yap at us, go ahead, I don't see but two out there. Y'all welcome to yap at us. General comments. I do want to say one thing before I turn it over to the legislature to start. Commissioner Ashudo, it's good to see you back tonight and glad to have you back and you're looking good. All right, Commissioner McIntyre?
I'll just ditto that, it's good to have you back, seeing you healthy and stay that way, all right? And other than that, I don't have any comments.
Mr. Morton?
We welcome Commissioner Ashudo back for the comments.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Donovan?
I'm just going to say that we'd only meet one time in the month of August, but subsequently this month, E D C will, will continue to move forward on their plan, planning efforts and look forward to maybe making a report to you a little bit later on about, you know, follow-up that we have done in, into our previous planning. Also, want to just mention that an, an effort to, to meet with some folks to move the broadband effort forward is still ongoing. We got reports in mid-July that the, the application that was submitted by M C N C doesn't look like it's going to be able to be funded by the federal dollars that were appropriated and awarded in mid-July, but we're still moving forward as, as best we can. And I'm excited about these kinds of things and the branding effort that's going on. So I think that we have an opportunity to, to really put our best foot forward and, and appreciate what's being done in order to make that happen.
Commissioner Ashudo?
Hey, just want to, first of all, you know, just want to thank, thank a bunch of folks here. You know, when I was going around giving my Stanley County taxpayer dollars at work thing, I always say that, you know, people complain about taxes, but by golly, when they call nine-one-one, they want the ambulance, police or fire department to be there and I'm glad they were there. I just want to thank the EMS, nine-one-one and the Alamo Fire Department and how they all work in conjunction. And I do know that, you know, it's really helpful having the Alamo Fire Department there because, you know, Danny Poplin jumped out of the ambulance and flagged down the fire department and had them drive to the hospital so the two guys could work on me going to the hospital. So I want to thank everyone for their thoughts and prayers. And I'll probably begin my workdays again, probably in September, so I'll start doing my monthly workdays again. And want to give a shout out to the Senior Center and Becky Wehmoff for all she does down there. First of all, the new floor, if y'all hadn't been down to that new floor in the Senior Center, looks fantastic. Definitely, we definitely needed to get it done. Last week, they had, this is a good use of tax dollars at work. Last week, they had a birthday party for all the ninety-year-olds plus in Stanley County. And there were ninety-four people in attendance that were ninety-plus. And of that, six were centarians, over a hundred years old. And the breakdown, you know, guys, we live long enough, we got pretty good odds out there because there were, there were eighty-one women and thirteen guys in attendance over. because there were, there were eighty-one women and thirteen guys in attendance over ninety years old. I don't know what that says about longevity and stuff, but, you know, and someone said they were surprised there were that many men that actually lived that long. And, you know, most of those people live at home, and I actually talked to a ninety-eight-year-old woman, she was still living by herself at her house, and we forget that people, you know, still do that out there. So, anyway. Oh, and the last thing I was going to tell you, that, I think she used a hundred dollars worth of tax dollars for that party, and she got a thousand dollars worth of sponsors from corporations. And they had a Frank Sinatra impersonator there and cake from the sweet shop, and it was just a pretty good, pretty good event all around. And, you know, it's, it's kind of awesome seeing these folks that are still spry and moving around at over ninety years old.
I have a little comment, Mr. Manager?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Next item, we will need, I'll entertain a motion to recess this meeting and go into closed session to discuss economic development, of course, with G S one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, little A parentheses, four parentheses. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Motion carried, did you get?